Welcome to the City Commission Study Session. Please turn off all cell phones during this session. First item is the presentation of the 2016 Audit. Welcome.
Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here tonight to present the results of the city's annual audit. My name is Stacy Hammond. I'm a partner with Berburch-Trayhan and a partner on the City of Leavenworth Audit. Everyone should have in front of them this evening two documents. A very large, bound, comprehensive annual financial report, which is the city's audited financial statements, and then a smaller report to the Mayor and City Commission. And this report always forms the basis of the presentation that I give. It lists the items that our audit standards require us to report about, the results of the audit. So if everyone would like to open that up to page one, I will begin by talking about our responsibilities in performing the city's audit. You know, we as the auditors, you know, our responsibility is to perform the city's audits in accordance with what we call generally accepted auditing standards, government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States, Uniform Guidance, the Single Audit Act, OMB's compliance supplement, and the Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guide. That's a lot of standards. Those standards require us to perform procedures in order to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the city's financial statements are free of material misstatement. Our procedures include examining, on a test basis, evidence supporting the amounts and financial statement disclosures in the financial statements. We also look at the accounting principles that the city used, significant estimates, any changes in accounting policies or procedures, and we evaluate the overall presentation of the city's financial statements. The most important thing that I'm going to tell you tonight is the results of that. And I'm pleased to report that as a result of our audit, we were able to determine that the financial statements of the city are presented fairly in all material respects in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, and therefore we issued an unmodified audit opinion. And that is the best kind of opinion that the city can receive. Does anyone have any questions about the opinion itself? Okay? If not, I'll proceed on to the accounting policies and practices section on page one of the report to the City Commission. In this section of the report, we would bring to your attention anything that we identified in the procedures that we performed relating to new accounting pronouncements, changes in accounting policies, things like that. And you know, in the accounting world, there are always new accounting standards that need to be adopted, and there was no exception this year. The city adopted two accounting standards. One was titled Gatsby Statement Number 72, and it relates to the fair value measurements of the city's investments. And it didn't, did not change at all how the investments are recorded in your financial statements, or the amounts that they're recorded at, or how they're recorded. All it did was tell us that we had to add some new footnote disclosures related to the investments. So it changed the narrative in the footnotes a little bit related to investments. There was another new standard that the city adopted, and it was called Gatsby Statement Number 77, and it relates to tax abatements. You know, this is something new and different that, you know, there are no amounts associated with tax abatements, you know, on your balance sheet or income statement, but the Gatsby thought that it would be interesting information for readers to know what tax abatements there might be out there, where the city's foregoing revenues in exchange for receiving something. And that can be abatements that you entered into yourself, or abatements related to, you know, a county or some other governing body, you know, that caused you to forgo revenues that you otherwise would have received. And I think that created about seven or eight pages of new footnotes in your financial statements to describe all that. And like I said, no changes in financial statement amounts, just a lot of verbal narrative and description of tax abatements that resulted from that adjust, from that new standard. Does anyone have questions about either of those two new standards?
No.
Okay. Moving on to page two. Under the Management's Judgments and Accounting Estimates section, the city does have several significant accounting estimates that were required to look at every year. And if you flip over to page four of the Report to the Commission, that's where those estimates are summarized. They are your accrued landfill closure and post closure care costs, the city's net O-CAB obligation, and your net pension liabilities that result from the police and fire pension plan, as well as your net pension liability resulting from CAPers. Our job as auditors is to look at the process that the city goes through to record those accounting estimates and decide whether we think it's reasonable or not. We were able to determine that the city's estimation process is reasonable, and that's what we're summarizing here on page four in that final column. Does anyone have questions about the city's accounting estimates?
No.
Moving back to page two of the report, there were a couple, several audit adjustments that we recorded as a result of our audit. We'd like you to know what those adjustments are, and they are summarized on the seventh page from the end of the audit report. And it's a page titled Adjusting Journal Entries. We'd like for your fiduciary responsibilities for you to know what we recorded during the audit. Most of these adjustments resulted from Ruby reporting entries as we were doing the audit, so they're really what we call client-prepared entries, that there were just certain things that she wasn't done with when we were here doing the audit, and made entries as that was going on. There were several of what we call past adjustments as well. And if you flip past the page titled Audit Adjustments, there is about six pages that are titled Summary of Past Adjustments, where we're required to have one page for each different opinion unit of the city. And those are adjustments that we deem to be immaterial enough based on the materiality of that opinion unit, that we're not required to record those in the financial statements. We also like you to know what those were. If you flip back to page two of the report, in the final sections at the bottom of that page, and at the top of page three, in the sections titled Disagreements with Management and the sections after that, here's where I would record if anything really bad had happened during the audit, if we'd had any disagreements with management, consultations with other accountants, or significant issues or difficulties that we encountered throughout the course of the audit. There's nothing in any of those areas that I'm required to report. Ruby and her staff were extremely transparent and helpful in answering all the questions that we had as we conducted our audit field work. Now, I would like to point out here that if the city had had significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls, this is where we would have reported those. The fact that you don't see anything here is good. That means that we did not find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in the city's internal controls, and therefore we had nothing to report. If you flipped to the page, several pages past that, there's a page with the city's letterhead on it, and a bunch of numbered items, and it's about seven or eight pages long. That's a document that we call the Representation Letter. And Management's Representation Letter is the final step in the audit process, and it really summarizes everything that management asserted to us as auditors throughout the course of the audit. And we like to include it in our packet to you so that, you know, it'll help you fulfill your fiduciary responsibilities in knowing what management represented to us throughout the audit. So I think it's an important document, you know, for you to have a look at and see if you have any questions about. In conclusion, I'd like to thank Ruby and her staff, that, like I said earlier, they were very transparent throughout the audit process, and they were prepared for the audit. And, you know, the fact that you had an unmodified audit opinion and didn't have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal controls, you know, is a sign that the city's dedicated, you know, to accurate financial reporting. At this point, I'd open it up to any questions that you might have, you know, about this document, or about the audited financial statements themselves.
Any questions?
No.
No.
Charles, okay. Is this the first year Ruby was here? Is this the first year you were here?
It's the first year that I've done the city's audit.
Good job.
Not audit, but financial statements.
Great job.
She had just started last year.
Right.
And wrote the CAFR, did all the preparation. So this is really the first year that Ruby did the preparation and wrote the CAFR.
Very good. Thank you so much for your, for your work and for the audit. This is great.
I'd like to thank Berburch-Trayhan. This has been a tough process the last couple of years with the communist conversion and with the changeover in staff, and they've been extremely patient and good to work with. So I'd like to thank your staff as well.
Thank you very much. I'll let my staff know about that.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Wonderful. Wonderful to hear. Okay. Second item on the agenda, Holiday Decorations Review.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, a couple of weeks ago at a City Commission meeting, there was some interest from the Commission to explore some holiday decorations for the downtown area.
Yes.
So staff spent the next couple of weeks meeting with our current provider, Manico, and talking about what we can and can't do, what are our options. We learned a lot about the new West Star polls, what you can and cannot do, agreements that you have to have now with West Star to put things on their polls. You can't leave brackets on like we used to with the old green polls. So quite the education in what you could do with polls. We also met with Main Street. As you know, Main Street has a pretty comprehensive banner program that they've done a great job with in the downtown, so I wanted to include them early on and see what, what we could do. Although it was August when we first met with them, it was getting close to the deadline when it comes to these decorations. They normally go in in November. They have to be built or ordered ahead of time, so we had a little bit of a time crunch too. What we've sort of ended up with, and I'm gonna pass these out, one, two, three, four, is kind of what we can do this year. We, again, we're limited mainly to the power to the polls on Delaware. Of the 60 new or so West Star polls, I think there are somewhere around half a dozen that have power to them. So we have some lighted wreaths, and I'll walk you through this packet in just a second. We have some lighted wreaths that we're gonna make sure go on any West Star existing polls that do have power, and then we have 28 total wreaths that we'll put back up somewhere. So what you have in front of you, the very first page, bottom right-hand corner, the bell with the lighted garland, that could go on the 50 Delaware polls and make a pretty significant impact in the downtown. You could alternate bells, candles. On the next page, you can see some different types, but these would go on the Delaware polls. We would, as part of this, go ahead and remove Main Street's banners for them and then put them back up as part of our contract with Manico. It's a very small fee because the banner arms twist on and off on Delaware. They're meant to come on and off. And these would go up and come down, they're LED lights, so they would last a very long time, and they make a pretty good statement on Delaware.
Are these purchased or at lease?
These are purchased, yes. And Manico, the company, would continue to store them. They'd install them, take them down, store them, just like they do with all of our current displays, and they have over the years with all of our stuff.
The wreaths, we own them too.
Yes, we own the wreaths now. And we, every once in a while, they'll call and we'll replace two or three that have had a bad year with some new ones. On the third page is sort of the only other option you have on Delaware. Delaware's polls are short, they have light fixtures, there's a lot of variables with those polls. The bottom row in the middle, I believe is referred to as a burst, and it's essentially kind of a lighted, looks a little bit like a wreath. The concern with that is it would hang pretty low on Delaware, and we're concerned about some vandalism, people grabbing them or anything like that. So in speaking with staff and speaking with Manico, if you're gonna do something lighted this year, the options on the first page, those do, just to give you an idea, and we've checked around quite a bit, those run in the $350 to $400 apiece range. So you're looking at about, to do the downtown, the whole sweep of Delaware, about $20,000, which I think was kind of the target, the unofficial target that the Commission was looking at for those.
So the wreaths that are there in the letter, then where would they go?
We would, there's, we own 28 wreaths.
Okay, so you can still use them for places where you don't have these.
We could still, yes, yes. And we would have those, we'd identify the polls that we would put those up on and see what we could do. There are some other things that we've seen that look really nice, you know, over mid-blocks, attached to buildings. It takes a little more lead time because you gotta install anchors, you gotta get agreements with building owners and stuff like that. So as far as what we can do this year, and again, there's no power to most of the new West Star polls, they don't have receptacles. We did inquire about solar-powered decorations, and they, they're experimenting with them. They're not offering them for sale yet, but he said maybe in the next couple of years because power companies are going away from receptacles and not allowing permanent stuff like that. So a solar cell, but they don't have anything right now at this time for something like that.
That would be great, to have more lighted picture. Somebody then.
So just a general consensus, does this seem acceptable? Any thoughts or comments? I can, I can bring something back to you, but again, we're probably by the middle, the third week of September, we probably need to give them a pretty good direction so they can get stuff ordered. We typically install these right after the Veterans Day Parade, and that week or two after the Veterans Day Parade is typically when our holiday decorations go up.
And Paul, just to mention it again, this is payable through the.
This is absolutely through the transient guest tax funds, which can only be used for tourism and tourism-related entities. We could not use this for any kind of.
Right. I just want to make it clear that it wasn't.
For general operations.
If it wasn't coming out of the general fund.
This is the hotel and motel bed tax.
Right. I'd say go with it.
Just a variety of things, or you want something that's all the same downtown?
I would, my opinion is I would like to see a variety of different stuff.
Maybe pick, pick three or four, then just continue to rotate.
Yeah.
I'm the opposite, but I'd like, I like consistency, but, so it's, you said the bells, so it would be the bells, is it just the first page here, or is it also included with the second page?
I could get a list of all, you look, some of them are six inch, some of them are five inch, some of them are seven inch, and those do have slightly different costs, so I think they'll work with us a little bit since we're purchasing 50 of them.
Is there inches as a feet?
Yeah, whatever they, oh, that's probably right. Yeah, we'd, I'd get in trouble if I put a six inch.
Six feet, yeah. I got that. I can read my measurements here, I know what he meant, but.
That wouldn't make much of a statement.
No.
No. Well, if you did, I would keep them like, to go with the mixture, like keep them more seven and six in that, the larger size.
Right.
It makes a better impact.
Same size, yeah. Make them the same size.
And then maybe not, like at least three, and you keep, you know, rotating them. Pick like three designs. I don't know if you're gonna wanna do.
Wouldn't pick all of them, but.
Every single one of them, yeah, that's.
That seven-foot shooting star is kind of nice.
I like the shooting star, yeah.
The pointcetta, and I don't know.
I like, you know.
Shooting star.
The candle.
The candle, the bell.
I like the angel.
I like the angels on the front page.
Yeah, the angels.
Angels.
Yeah. But the ones on the front page are the ones that I actually.
I like the angels too, yeah.
Everybody's got different.
Everybody's gonna have an opinion, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, why don't you check into it and maybe get a variety then?
Okay. Do the angels come up here?
Like she said.
Or is it just showing you the versatility?
No, they're just showing you one, I don't think.
What it looks like on both sides.
Yeah, they're two opposite ones, two different ones.
Okay. Cause I was taking that as one big design, yeah.
That's maybe the easier way.
That'd be a pretty big streak.
Yeah, it would be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I think they all look pretty good. I don't see any that I wouldn't want.
Okay.
Yeah, to see that, like on the second page, there's a three-and-a-half-foot shooting star, and there's a seven-foot shooting star, and go with the larger one.
I like the larger one, yeah.
So that they're all the same size.
I think we rub this, it's gonna look nice.
I'd go for the larger ones, okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. Next, anything else on the decorations review? Okay. Too bad Commissioner Pricinger isn't here since this was.
Yeah, he needs to call in on this one, yeah.
You know what he said? Do whatever you want.
Well, I just want it, but just do whatever you want, yeah.
Whatever you want. Okay. Next item on the agenda is New Lawrence Road Improvements.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, as you and everybody I think in the community knows at this point, there is a 101-unit single-family subdivision going in at New Lawrence Road and 20th Street. The final plat of the first phase, which I believe I put in here, is 49 units, I think it's 49 and 52, how they're gonna do it, is before the Planning Commission next week, and then it'll be shortly before you for final approval, and then we expect grading work to start this fall. The last major issue in that is New Lawrence Road. As you know, coming off 20th Street, it's improved for maybe the first 100 feet or so. It's not a road that's capable of handling traffic to the subdivision for safety reasons, for a whole variety of reasons. That road could also play a pretty big role in any future expansion of Muncie Road. We don't have a final design yet, but there's been some thought that maybe going from New Lawrence to 20th is expensive and tough, and may not bring as much bang for the buck as just bringing it to New Lawrence. In that case, you would need a tie-in there off New Lawrence Road and improvement. We have met with staff, we've met with the developer, we've met with our financial advisors on how to get New Lawrence Road improved through there. It's a relatively straightforward and simple project. It's a flat piece of ground. It's a continuation of the profile that's in place off 20th Street. We're hoping to time, no matter how this is built, time the bit of the work out with the interior roadwork within the subdivision and the business parks, so maybe you can capitalize on some good bid. The question is, how does it get built? We've thrown around things like benefit districts, we've thrown around different ideas of how it could get built, and I think sort of as a staff level, we settled on using a portion of the property tax created by those homes in that development to pay the debt service on the road. Preliminary estimates are probably in the $500,000 range. That may be high, we may be able to get a better price than that, but certainly not debt that homes of that value would, would not cover. And it would, once we got a better number from an engineer's estimate, we could do a little better calculations of, is it 20% of that property tax over 10 years that would pay off that debt? We've done some preliminary calculations.
You think at least 10 years term?
We'll just have to see what the number came in at. We don't have an engineering contract at this point, so that would be the next step. But just wanted to bring it to the Commission tonight for some discussion on getting that road improved. We would probably go past the north edge of the property line of the subdivision to a likely area where Muncie Road would connect, an extension of Muncie Road would connect, so that that would make that an easier process when we got there.
Well, it'd be cheaper too.
So do you have some idea of how many properties would be along there that would be, that the taxes would be?
So it would, it would be that, it would be the taxes off the 101 units.
The units themselves.
A benefit district you could assign to one side of the road or the other. I don't know that there was a lot of staff support for putting the homeowners on the west side of New Lawrence Road and then kind of benefit district for that road.
I would rather have it stay, cause it's driven with this development. I'd rather have this development supported.
And to clarify, this would not be, staff's recommendation is not a benefit district. It's an internal calculation of using, of diverting those property tax funds. It's not an added property tax to those homeowners. It would be something that we would track internally.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm clear on that.
We've talked about some residential incentives in the past about property taxes, so we didn't feel comfortable bringing something that would add a surcharge to that property tax. So this would essentially just capture some of those dollars to pay the debt service.
Good.
Okay.
Yeah.
Nothing in addition to that.
If there was a consensus on that, what we would probably do is start the process of a design contract so we could get better numbers. It's not a tough project to estimate, so I think we have a pretty good idea of what it's gonna cost, but it would have to be a designed project. And I think it's at the level that we could do the inspection on that in-house.
Okay. So we do the consensus at the next meeting?
The direction would be to sort of go for it in that direction, and then, then what we would do is go to a design, a contract, and a design contract could come in below the threshold of the Commission, so then we would enter into that and then bring the road forward after that.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah.
Does that concept seem to, seem okay?
Yes.
Yes.
When do they expect to start bill, actually, building? They're still doing infrastructure, right, now?
Yeah, they, they were very optimistic about pouring some basements this fall. I think it's pretty much spring. I think the developer would tell you that too, that most likely it's gonna be spring when they start pouring basements.
Okay. That's good. Good evening.
Good evening.
Next item on the agenda, Review Stormwater Program and Setting Public Information Meeting Dates.
Madam Mayor and Commissioners, this is moving forward with our discussion of stormwater funding and possible fees and such. We've had three meetings with the Commission and talked about a wide variety of aspects of our current stormwater, and we looked at some future methods to obtain revenue from fees or assessments and a variety of things. In short, we are trying to schedule two public information meetings, one in late September, general timeframe, and the other in late October.
Okay.
And they would be, we expect there would be one meeting at the Community Center and one probably out at the fire station, just to have them in different geographical areas. If this is a good strategy with the Commission, we would like to select a couple of dates so we can move ahead with our planning and notification and such.
Good. We really wanna promote this too, because I've already talked to quite a few people about this, and I think some of the things we've talked about as far as the fee versus taxes, putting it on your taxes, nobody wants it on their taxes, at least the people that I've talked to, but I'd be interested in hearing what the general public says at these meetings about these things too.
Yeah, it'd be cheaper to go through the billing, but.
Well, they just felt like it was fairer that way. I just, I don't know, just different people have told me that. It's not my, it's my opinion till I get all the information, but that's what I'm hearing.
Are there any of these dates that you find that we're overlooking some conflict with, with the Commissioners who, it's not required that you attend, but if there was somebody that, we would hate to schedule on top of.
I'd recommend your, your first Thursdays on both, first one at the Community Center and the October the 26th at the fire station.
Yeah.
Which dates, the 12th and 26th?
28th and 26th.
20th.
28th of September.
I'm sorry, month wrong, okay, 28th of September.
And 26th of October.
Yeah, yeah. I think when you're getting closer into November, it's a little too close to the holidays. I don't think you're capturing people's attention, a lot of distractions, so. And then that also, the earlier the feedback you get, the more discussion.
Yeah, I'm okay with these dates.
Those, those dates look good to me, too.
I have no idea if those dates are good for me, guys. There's no calendar in front of me. Just deal with it.
Well, just get them, get them over with, early, better.
Yeah, yeah.
Before the weather starts getting colder and all that.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's pretty close in time. The, yeah, the 26th and the, 28th of September and the 26th of October, sounds good to me, too.
And those locations work on those days, Mike?
Yes.
If it gets really bad, you can always do November, too.
Well, yeah, that's true, too.
Yeah, we can have a third meeting.
Yeah, yeah. You know, if it's, yeah, if you just, I, my concern, I really would like, and you can never tell what's gonna happen, I really would like some good participation and feedback on this before the fact we do this and, you know, we pick, because like the Mayor had said, I'm getting more feedback that people would prefer the fee rather than the tax because then you're getting all users in there and, you know, spreading it out and, you know, but none of it's gonna be popular, and you just want it to be, you know, to be as clear and as much input as possible.
To talk about what a need, what a needed it is, and that's what.
Yeah.
I've been talking to people about what a need we have to do this, otherwise our city's falling in. We can't have that. And we've gotta take care of what we got, so.
No, yeah, and, and the pictures are worth a thousand words, you know.
That, that sounds great, guys. I appreciate that. That would be really good to get a lot of public input.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, okay.
That was pretty easy. Next item, Review Food Licensing Ordinance, Chapter 54, Article 3.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, at the August 1st study session, reviewed this section of the Code of Ordinance, which is really pretty, pretty skimpy, and wanted to just kind of add some more language to it to just make it a little bit easier to, to enforce and, and just define things a little bit better. And I think it was kind of lacking in some of the things that we've just kind of interpreted along the way that weren't really, you know, written into the code. So staff has done some research, compared ordinances from various other surrounding cities and put together some options in here. I put a lot of things into what's in front of you, and so it's kind of like if there's, if there's a section or something that you don't like, it can be removed, it can be changed. So just kind of disturb the discussion and see, but like I said, I just kind of looked at different cities and just kind of pulled stuff out that there was in a lot of cities that were pretty not having trouble.
I just have a top page. All he's got is top page, too.
Yeah, that's all he's got.
So the first couple pages are just the current code, which is, you know, there's not a lot to that. And then starting on the next page is what staff put together. The first part of it is just kind of a general overview of that section, talks about what, what different entities or would need some type of a food regulation. Food and drinking establishments, mobile food vendor, ice cream vendors, and then temporary food services of some type. The health permit, that section that I've got is listed as 54-133, that's what's existing in the code right now, just expanded it very slightly. And then the what I've got listed is section 54-134, that also is existing in the current code. And that's just the need for a food handler permit and that the city does offer those classes and license those. The next one, the section 54-136, previously or currently, what we use for the food safety service establishments is a 1976 version. You know, food service and food safety doesn't change a lot, but would recommend that we adopt the 2012 Kansas Food Code.
That sounds like a good plan.
That would be a little bit more current there, yeah.
As you're looking at it, it's kind of like, hmm, that's a little old, but, you know, again.
Are inspections now, just kind of for a review, generally for enforcement, it's still the fire department does that? And do they do it like on a rotating basis, are you complaint-driven, just kind of generally?
There is, each food establishment has to have a food permit each year. It's basically, they go out and do it on a complaint basis. So if they get a complaint about something, they do go out and inspect it. When there's a new establishment, it's required that they have their state license first. And so our people aren't doing like the real, you know, intense inspection, they let the state do that first and then we go in and do kind of a, just a follow-up inspection. But again, if there's a complaint, then it's driven by our people going out and do that based on complaints. And then the next one, section 54-137, that's the existing, what the penalties are for non-compliance with the ordinance. And then after that, that's pretty much what's existing in the current ordinance and then it starts to expand a little bit. The next one that I've got is 54-138, is if something should be denied or we revoke somebody's permit for any kind of appeal process, there wasn't anything before. So have just put in an appeal process, so if somebody does not get approved for a license, what that, what that would entail. I've got it written up here, I mean, there's some different ways you can do that. I've got it written so that the first appeal would go to the city manager. And the commission could either decide that it stops with the city manager, whatever his decision is, is final, or it still could be appealed to the city commission. So that's just a preference, whatever the commission would like to do on that section, so.
Okay.
There's that. The next one, the next division then goes into the food and drinking establishments themselves. Goes in and it defines what a food and drinking establishment is, so it's pretty, you know, what we determined that they are right now. And then what are required by a food or drinking establishment, and that would be just a health permit and food handler permit for every employee. And again, that's what we do now for anybody who has a food or drinking establishment, so that doesn't really change, just defined what a food establishment was a little bit better. And then the next section is a temporary food service, gone through and defined what those would be, basically a city-approved event. So that would be, you know, anything that, you know, we would approve. And then temporary food service, and just define that, and then an event coordinator and promoter. And that just defines if that's the person that's holding the event. The way it's written that anybody holding the event is pretty much in, it's their responsibility, once they get whoever's going to be serving food, they get that application to them, they get it back to us. So we're not, we're not having to.
Yeah, jump every place.
Yeah, with 10 different people trying to get that, we're working with one coordinator who would get that information and then get it back to us. And then the health and safety officers would review the application, what's the person wanting to serve, how are they serving it, do they have a state license already? If they don't, if they do, then that's fine, again, our health and safety officers would do a quick inspection. If they don't, then we would need to do a more thorough inspection.
Excuse my ignorance, but how, how does this apply when we're doing like our chili cook-off or that sort of thing? I mean, we're, I mean, that's not a vendor, it's an organization. But we have other organizations that do stuff like that, too, in our community center.
Yeah, typically we don't get involved whenever it's a private organization doing a private event. When we start looking at it, it becomes a service to the public.
Yeah.
Yeah, or, and especially if it's going to be on, you know, city property, if it's an event that's held on city property also, we want to be a little bit more cautious and regulate that a little bit more.
Yeah, I think I'd like to look into that more later, just.
Okay.
I mean, there's so many different things that go on in our community that I don't think we would want to do this.
That we wouldn't want to be in.
On everybody, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, this is basically if it's on city property, if it involves a big public event.
Because we have stuff in our parks, we have Easter egg hunts, you know, where we serve food, we have unity in the community events, we have other things, I don't think they should fall under this. But I don't know. And they haven't been, right?
They haven't been.
And I don't think they should.
Yeah.
I think this is also too, if they're selling to the public, too.
Oh, rather than.
Yeah, that's all provided, you're just giving it away.
Giving it away, yeah.
And there's some provisions in here that, you know, exclusions, anyone holding, you know, fundraiser events, if they're a nonprofit, so that's on the next page.
Oh, okay, and sorry, I jumped ahead.
And if I haven't included something that the commission would like to include, then we obviously could add that, that's, you know, that's what we're looking for, some guidance here.
All right, I just, yeah, that's, sorry.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Again, our staff looked at a lot of what cities do and for the most part, they, kind of three consecutive days, that's usually if there's a, some kind of a public event or a festival or something like that, three days is usually about the maximum. So that's, we've got written in here that the temporary permit is for an event no more than three consecutive days. Again, I think I mentioned, as long as they've got a health permit from the state of Kansas or any other state, then that kind of tells us if we're looking at the application or the health and safety officers, that they've been in, they've had a thorough inspection by some entity like that and they won't have to do as vigorous of an inspection. Again, if they don't, then the city health officer can do that and maybe there's an additional fee on top of that, because they are going to have to spend a little bit more time and make sure that everything is safe and that they know how to do proper food handling. And then the next section is just what would be required on the registration application, pretty straightforward, their name, do they have a Kansas tax ID number? Have they ever been, you know, denied an application anywhere else? And, you know, that's pretty straightforward on what we ask for in the application. And then the next section is exclusions, things I've got on, the staff has on there right now is, application fee shall be waived if it's a nonprofit, 501(c)(3) organization with proof of registration. Any mobile food vendor who currently holds a city permit, so if they already hold a permit within the city, they wouldn't need, we just need to know that they're going to be at that event, they don't need to pay anything else. If they're an ice cream vendor, holding a City of Leavenworth Ice Cream Vendor License, they wouldn't need anything else. And if they're a food establishment within the city, holding a license, they wouldn't need anything either. We could expand that to say any school organizations, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, we could kind of put some wording in like that if you would like, and if there's any other exclusions.
And most of those would fall under the nonprofits.
Yeah, I'm trying to make it kind of broad, but we could, you know.
Good, where it is.
Okay. And if you, if you would want to put something in there about some kind of a fundraising event, if you want to exclude those, we could put that in, or if you just want to leave it.
I would stick with the nonprofits and, and, because those are few and far between and they're really small on a case-by-case basis and, you know, so I would just sometimes you legislate too much and just keep it broad, yeah.
Carla, I got a question, which I know is probably going to sound stupid, but I've got to ask it. I know the other cities, when they've done this, they haven't thought far enough ahead and somebody complains about the youngsters who's opened the lemonade stand.
It's in here.
It's in here, I was so surprised, I know.
And I don't want to lie to you.
Because I saw some kids doing it, like this summer for the first time in like ages, and so I just.
I've seen a couple of them this summer.
I cracked up there, yeah, I know, because, yes, yeah.
Yeah, we ran through a lot of cities and, you know what, one didn't have, another one did, it was like, oh, that's a good point, okay, yeah.
That's good, that's good.
The next division is the mobile food vending. Again, the first section just defines what a mobile food vendor is, which was one of the things we were kind of lacking, we really didn't have too much to go on, was kind of like, do you have wheels? You're mobile.
Yeah, well, honestly, we've just now started, I mean, recently, you know, the trucks, so this is a new thing for the community, too, so just kind of add in the update there with it, yeah. Unless we had like a big event or something like that, you know, not too many people have been driving around in trucks still recently.
Number five, define what public property is, a street, alley, parking lot, parking spaces, city parks, recreational areas. And then number seven, the mobile package delivery truck. Again, that's somebody orders something, it's delivered to you, that wouldn't be considered a mobile food vending operation unless you would want it to be, but that's basically your.
Schwanz. Schwanz.
Yeah, I know, and I don't, yeah.
The push cart would be like the tamale man when I, when we were kids.
Hot dogs.
Back in the 60s.
Haven't heard about them for years, but he just, this guy just pushed this cart around town, all over town.
Yeah, just, so, just we want to make sure that it doesn't have to be a, you know, something you're driving, it can be a push-around vehicle as well. Registration required would be a health permit and food handling permit and then the local food vending license. Registration application, again, name, address, tax ID number. This one would require general liability insurance, just because if the city commission would like, wants to allow it, they could vent from the city street. And then we would want to have that, that insurance, just to make sure if there was any incidents or anything like that, that the city would be listed as additional insured and we want to cover ourselves and make sure that there, you know, there weren't any, and come back onto the city. And then the next section, operating conditions, that's got a lot of information in there as far as what a mobile food vendor could or could not do. Right now, and again, it wasn't in the ordinance, but we have just kind of told mobile food vendors that they can't sell from the city streets, they can't sell from the city parking lot, they can't sell from a park. All they can do is go find a lot, an existing business area and get permission from that business and that's where they would sell.
Like the hotel is doing, get permission to be on their property, okay.
Get permission to be there and that's where you can be.
On C here, where you've got food vendors operating within a feet of a permanent brick-and-mortar place during their operating hours. I know, I looked at that and it was just, oh, there's, there, you're getting into the weeds there.
Without written permission, though.
Yeah, well, and that's the part that kind of really, because, I don't know, I had concerns with that.
And I left that because I saw.
What kind of, yeah, I don't want somebody to block a restaurant, oops, sorry about that, folks. Yeah, you wouldn't want them parking and blocking the visibility of a restaurant, I mean, that would just enrage somebody because of all the overhead and things that are going on with that. But if they're on like an opposite side of the street or.
What kind of footage are we talking about?
Yeah, and I'm not a good judge of feet distance either, or if they're on opposite corners or something like that, but, so.
Some cities had it within 50 feet, I think that's a little close personally. Others had 100 feet, 150 feet, you could go as far as you'd like. I know I talked to Public Works to find out, you know, what is, he said, 250 feet is an average block downtown, so if that helps visualize.
Okay, like if, say if where Haymarket Square is, if you, because we have vendors in there and across the street, not currently, but there were, you know, there were restaurants directly across the street, how, what kind of distance is that?
Mike, I know if you were, if you were at Haymarket Street.
I mean, because that's where it would directly, that's an event place that would directly. Is that 50 or 60 feet?
If you're in the pavilion at Haymarket, you're probably 200 feet from buildings on Cherokee Street, within 200 feet.
That's under the pavilion.
Yeah, under the pavilion, but if they're up near the street, they're 50 or 60 feet.
If they were, they're right across the street from Cherokee.
I want to support this, but I also want to support our brick-and-mortar building down there in Pucu, Texas.
If you're across the street, most of the streets were about 60 foot from property line, the right-of-way line, the right-of-way line, so that's 60 foot, straight across the street.
Okay, plus sidewalk, so.
Sure, number, I was going to suggest 150, but.
Well, I was going to suggest 100, but either, either those, is that too, too long of a distance?
And again, if, if it's a business that wants to kind of partner with a food vendor, they can always go closer with permission.
With permission, right?
Yeah.
I would say 100 feet, myself, that, that's my opinion.
That's why I asked for a specific example, I, you know, it's like, yeah.
And you know, the commission doesn't have to come up with an answer this evening, this is just kind of to think about it.
Yeah, I would just, yeah, like I said. I cannot tell from how, how many feet it is from me to him, so, you know, if you can't visualize that without somebody telling me, that's, you know, is it 20, 15, I don't know, you know, and that, so, that's why I need an example, don't, but I do need an example.
60 feet across the street, from one to the other, isn't that what you said?
From side, from one side to the other, that's 60 feet. Yeah, and then if it's in Haymarket Square, you're back farther, but say if, okay, say if you're on where Pullman's is and like the main street event that they're doing right now, where Pullman's Restaurant is, if they use that parking lot there, that's a city parking lot, but if they're doing, and it's a sanctioned event, but someone decides, well, you know, I want to get a permit and I want to put a truck there or something like that, I don't know, whatever would come up, but, you know, is that, keep it like, I think 50 feet to that restaurant would be too close, so you're talking much farther across the parking lot there. Or, you know, or even across the street would be pretty close there.
That's something to think about.
Yeah, so, I know, and it is, like I said, it is getting in the weeds, but that's going to have the impact.
Yeah, yeah, we've already, you know, we have a sanctioned event, we use that parking lot, we'd be close to the restaurant anyway. But just, we're talking about just somebody wanting to start a business on a, you know, and that's why, that's why, in my opinion, it's more of 100 feet, I think 150 might be too far from our properties, you know, where you're going to be selling, but 50 feet to me is too close to a brick-and-mort- me is too close to a brick-and-mortar restaurant.
They can't sell off the street.
No.
So, they've got to be on a, on a lot. So, you're going to need 150 feet, 100 feet's not going to get it.
No, that's true, too.
And, I mean, and that's up to the commission, if you want to, if you want them to remain not being able to sell off the street.
Well, most of those are a lot wider than what the, with the, or the same width as a lane, and I think it'd be encroaching on the street.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, that's my feelings on it, plus if you've got kids who are getting excited and they run around this thing, they're going to be in traffic, or you've got adults who have been doing the same thing, so.
Yeah, I agree, I don't, I don't want to see them on the streets, I don't, no.
That's a whole nother set of issues.
There's a whole new set of problems, yeah.
They're the only one that I can see on a street.
And, you know, we're not even there yet, so why create?
There's your ice cream guy that traditionally has it.
Yeah, an ice cream vendor is only about the closest thing, you're right.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, there's a consensus that you do not want them on the street.
Right.
Okay, because that will take a lot of these operating conditions then out completely.
Yes.
So, the commission, we're going to see it where they can, they can only be on a private property with permission from the owner?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, if they're on pri, if they're on with permission of, or with the owner, never mind, not in the.
Well, honestly, and those aren't the only ones that I really know of right now, if they've partnered with a private property. Have we gotten anywhere there, that they've been selling off the street?
Yeah, I have seen them before, during the parades and stuff, where they've done that.
Yeah, yeah, well.
I mean, some of them they do, I mean.
But, no, outside of an event, outside of like, yeah, outside of a sanctioned event.
But outside of, but other, I've seen others, I mean, yeah, we used to run them off, I mean, we used to call the city on them because we'd see people selling stuff.
Because when we get a, a mobile food vendor that comes in, we tell them they can't be on the city streets. It's not really written into the code, but that's what we've just kind of told them, and that's why, you know, I just kind of wanted to get a, if the city commission wants to continue that, if they, if you'd like to allow them to be on the street, you can.
No, I, I, I'm not, I'm not ready to go there, you're going to need to call me and knock on my door and talk to me personally, and if you want that. Where I, right now, I want to respect, it's hard enough for the brick-and-mortar guys.
Then we want to leave it with the city manager turning it down, we don't want it to come back.
Right, yeah, absolutely, good point there, yes, what she said.
I want to go back to that, we got finished with this.
Okay, so, all right, so, temporary street code, let's see.
Okay, so that'll have to be, so all those have to be pulled out, as you say?
Yeah, so we'll take some of, we'll take anything out that references anything on the street.
Okay.
So, city parks, let's see, local food vendors shall not operate or locate on public facilities or parks unless located in an on-streets parking spa, parking stall, as part of a city-approved event.
Not, and the ice cream vendor, though, is separate from this.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, okay, I just wanted, yeah.
Okay.
I've read it, I just want to be sure.
Yeah, he's on the street.
Okay, and then, shall not locate on any city or public property or park without first obtaining permission from the city. So, we can leave that in case there is a, kind of an event or something like that, that kind of leaves, leaves it open that they can.
Want to know how thorough you were?
I'm sorry?
Want to know how thorough she was? I just cracked up when you said, every unit must be stationary while vending. I was like, yeah, I think so, yes, I know, I was just, but, you know, you, common sense, you got it, you got it, yeah, common sense there, yeah.
So, written permission from a property owner, would be required hours of operation, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., I don't know if you want to, if they're on private property, if you, if the commission would want to put time limits on there, it's up to you.
Well, oh, God, I don't, do any of our events go later than at night? And not, yeah, just on private property, yeah.
Yeah, and this wouldn't necessarily be an event, this would just be a normal.
Yeah, I just, I.
I mean, we can, we can cross that out completely, I don't know.
I don't know if that would really be needed.
Okay. Prohibited sales, no alcoholic beverages, cereal beverage, or tobacco products sold from a mobile food truck, you're in agreement with that? And then the lighting, no flashing lights, sound devices, that's more.
Yeah, because if, you know, you've got to buy a hotel, that's not.
Full horn and on, yeah.
Yeah.
Section seven, the signs, that really is just, you know, the, the development regulations, what's permitted for signage, trash, and site cleanup. Licenses required, and then exclusions, anyone selling in a city-approved event, vendors selling at the farmer's market, ice cream vendors, which is in a different section, vendors selling on public or private school property, so we'll just kind of leave that to schools if they want to do something. The sale of farm or garden products grown by the seller, as allowed by the states, we don't regulate that. Anything that's a catering service or a private event, not open for sale to the general public, so that kind of talks about what the mayor, you know, said, do we want to, do we want to look at private events? And then again, packaged food delivery trucks, and then the last one, neighborhood refreshment stands are similar.
Yay, okay.
Division five is the ice cream vendor. Definition of that, requirement is a, the ice cream vendor license, a health permit, food handler permit, and then the registration, what's required on the application for that. Item number nine, and why ice cream is separate from the other is, number nine is, if they're required by the state of Kansas to register as an offender, then there's a couple of other things under that that would be required. Operating conditions are things that they cannot do, which are basically, basically what it's saying is we, you know, they can be on streets, going at a slow speed, that's kind of a recap of that, while they make their sales, no double parking, no U-turns, no backing up, have to be stationary while they're making their sales, so everything's just safety-driven, since it's children who are going to be around the, the ice cream trucks, the majority, and myself. And then, hours of operation, again, if you'd like to put in hours, kind of the 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 after sunset, that was kind of standard.
Yeah, in the dark is not a good thing, yeah, it's, anything that's before gets, before dark, and that's mostly in the summer, but I've actually heard then after the time changes in, in the fall, and I was really surprised because it was starting to really get dark, and I heard the dinging of the bell, and not too comfortable with that.
Were there any items in there that the commission, you know, didn't feel that they wanted in there, or, and again, you know, just to come back again if the commission wants to move forward, if you have anything that you'd like to strike or add, you can do that. And then exclusions, again, anything as part of a city-approved event or anything on school And then vehicle inspection, that just allows the police department to inspect, or any designated official of the city, to inspect them at any time, to make sure that they're in compliance. And then the last page is just what kind of fees the city commission might want to put in place for any of these things. I've got what are, what we currently have as fees, the mobile food vendor is $60, and that's for somebody who has an annual mobile food vending license, so it's $60 for that. A health permit is $100 per year. The food handler, the class that the city puts on is $10 for that, and then once you attend that, it's a lifetime certificate, so there's no retesting or anything like that, so it's a one-time $10. If somebody loses their card, we charge a dollar just to give them a duplicate food handler card. We offer reciprocal food handler license, so if somebody can show us that they've taken a food handling class from another state, another city, anything like that, then we honor that. Currently, we only charge, if somebody shows us that, that they've taken it somewhere else, it's just a dollar, then to issue a city card. That's just what we've done, if the commission likes just that dollar, we can certainly continue with that for a, just printing a reciprocal card and keeping them on file. And then the temporary food service permit per event, as we've discussed, three days is usually what an event usually lasts, so three consecutive days. Kind of standard, what we've seen from other cities is $10. So, we don't want to make it restrictive, we just want to make sure that we've got everything, know what they're selling, make sure that it's safe, so, $10 for that.
Yeah, I'm okay with those, yeah.
Okay, and then the inspection, so if a temporary food truck does not have a state license and our city health officer has to do the inspection, then that would be an additional fee for that. Talking with the health and safety, they kind of thought maybe $25 was probably a fair amount to have to do, and go out and do an inspection of a vehicle who hasn't already been inspected by the state.
What's the state charge?
I don't know what the state charges. The, the state allows, if somebody is a temporary food vendor, they can, they can set up and sell a certain number of times, I think it's six times a year, without having to actually purchase a state food license, but then they kind of put it on the cities to say, but follow whatever the municipality, whatever their regulations are, which is then for us to kind of step in and do that inspection. So, like I said, just talking to that health and safety, we kind of thought maybe $25, that kind of covers their time going out and doing that, but that's just a, just a suggestion. If the city commission would like to see a different fee on that, that's something reasonable. And then the ice cream vendor license, probably would suggest, just to near what the mobile food vendor license is, that's what we charge for.
That makes sense.
Ice cream now, we don't have them separated, but that's currently what an ice cream vendor Any other questions?
The only question I just had, out of curiosity, and this goes back to page three, when we brought up the appeals, and I was just kind of curious, how many appeals can one get a year on food vendor license?
Well, we don't have any now because there really isn't.
An appeal process?
There's an appeal process, and we haven't had any that we've denied, but I, it's probably a good idea just to have that in there in case we do have to at any time.
Do you anticipate, would you anticipate a, a big number, or just a couple here and there?
I wouldn't anticipate a big number.
My thought was if, if somebody thought they could come to the commission and get it changed, then they might do that, but I, that's maybe being negative, too, I don't know, so, I'm okay with the way you put it in here.
Would the commission like to see that, so just a city manager with your CPO, and then nothing?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
I think put it on his plate.
Well, honestly, you're going to go by the recommendation that the fire and the police will go out there, and.
These specific types of things.
It would be based off what I believe is the interpretation or the, the letter of the ordinance.
Exactly, and so it's more of a legal thing, that I, I don't think we would need to get involved in that.
No.
I mean, it's a day-to-day operations thing that I don't think commissioners want to micromanage everything.
Correct.
Based on it, I wouldn't expect there would be any, ever, but, you know, and if, and if somebody was angry enough about it, they'd come to us anyway, you know? So, you know, everybody has that option.
Aren't most of those out-of-town individuals, very Cuban-town individuals?
The ones that we currently have, or what we anticipate for like.
What we'd anticipate.
Yeah, yeah, usually out of town.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
No, very thorough, though, very thorough.
They did a good job.
Any other business? No, the only, only thing I have to say is, you know, just all the news and everything, I think about how blessed and fortunate we are in our community right now with everything that's going on down south, how would we deal with that, you know, as a city, as an individual, or as a city, or as a community, you know? I mean, it's, it's, what we do is, is important in keeping, taking care of our resources and taking care of our community to make sure we don't, you know, get into bad situations like what they, what they did in Texas, and so, anyway, I just want to be thinking about that with our public and with the, with the citizens in our community, because I think everybody feels the same way about that, that we're, right now, greatly blessed to have good weather here and not be having to face that kind of devastation.
With that, I have a small housekeeping issue, and because of the construction that's been going around Cherokee, we've had to take some alternate routes, and going down a few alleys on there, and where the First City Museum is, the charity there where they have a clothing drop-off, that, that needs to be reined in, it's, it's spreading far and wide, it's covering the First City Museum, so the, the organization, the charity organization, they, they need to go in the back and do some cleanup back there, it's, they need to take attention to that. Code enforcement, or someone could pay someone a visit there, and they need to be courteous neighbors, and I don't know how long it's going on, but it's visible now because people are traveling down the alley temporarily because of the construction.
Anything else? No? All right, with that, we are adjourned.